Alright, so let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, Sep- twenty, September 24th. If I can ask everyone to please stand and recite the Fledge of Allegiance.
.................................................................................... Okay, roll call please.
...... Here. Ted Rooney.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Ouz.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Alright, so we had everybody tonight. Our agenda, we will open it up for public comment. If there's anybody who'd like to speak, I have to get you to limit your comments to three minutes or less. We will have a very good educational presentation tonight on the Berlin Professional Learning Tour and Global Youth Leadership Summit from the summertime. And we'll have updates from our student school board reps, superintendent's report. We'll approve the consent vote agenda which we reviewed last week in committee. We will have a brief update from Facilities and Finance, couple of comments on program and personnel. No property, no CEDO?
Ah, CEDO.
Brief CEDO update, ISP Jim?
No.
Okay. And then we will convene an executive session this evening. Other than to reopen, to return to open session, we will not be taking any action. And the subject tonight is collective negotiating matters, five by OCS 120 slash two C2. Right? Anything else? Alright, so let us start. Anybody from the public who would like to speak tonight? No? Okay. So we will move on to our educational presentation.
Very excited tonight to invite all of the participants in the Berlin Professional Learning Tour and the Global Youth Leadership Summit students to come join me. We're going to share, I'm going to start by sharing a brief history of how we got to the point that we were experiencing this amazing summit. And then each of the participants is going to share kind of snippets of what we experienced while on tour, as well as the impact that it's had on them personally and their practice. So it was just a year ago that I was fortunate enough to attend a scholarship trip to Helsinki and Milan. And that experience came just after having spent a week with educators, immersed in professional learning, something that we'd repeated over the last two years. And so I was fresh with having seen the amazing things that happen when you bring educators together from our two schools of different disciplines with the sole purpose of spending time together, developing innovative practices for students. When I experienced what it was like on a world stage to see educators engaged in that same thing with students who were at a summit using design thinking to solve a challenge connected to the global goals. It struck me at that time that if we were truly to provide global experiences for our students, that it was really important for us to develop something similar for our educators, that we needed to prepare educators for that kind of learning so that they could support students in engaging in that learning. And from that moment in July 2017 until July 2018, we spent a lot of time and energy working with EF to design an experience that would be unique for our teachers, but would also have us collaborating with educators from across the United States and across the globe. And so I'm not going to say much more about it, other than that each of our educators came with an essential or a driving question that they wanted to study, and they committed to implementing a project that they designed while on the tour, as well as sharing the impact of that experience with colleagues. And the results have been incredible. I can't wait for them to describe them to you. We're going to start with Tara Nieves, who was one of the chaperones of the Student Summit and the students who attended the Youth Summit in Berlin. Tara?
Hi, everyone. My name's Tara Nieves, and I was one of the chaperones along with Emily Kerner from LHS. We were lucky enough to accompany four of our students from District 128, one from Vernon Hills and three from LHS. I'm going to let two of our students who are here tell you about their takeaways and their experiences, but I do want to highlight how well our students represented District 128 in our philosophy. From the very beginning, these students were dreamers and doers. We had two who were extensively traveled, one who had been to Mexico with her family and one who had never been out of the country. And these four decided to go on this trip, which none of us had been on before, and become our inaugural group. Of course, our students are aware. They were aware of where we were and how it was different and how it was similar. And they were struck by all of the scenes that we were able to see. They were resilient and healthy. I saw them walk to the very tip-top of Mount Placid. I saw them go down another scholus albona to Bagen. And I thought, oh my goodness, we're going to crash and burn, and they did it well. Certainly, they were inquisitive. Emily and I looked at each other so many times and nodded our heads because we knew what each other was thinking. We were thinking, our kids are so inquisitive. Whether it was in their collaborative groups with people they didn't know, whether it's when we were on tours of under mountain mines, or we were listening to experts on energy-efficient homes and environments, they were asking questions and they were engaged. And then, of course, they were nimble. They tried new food. They never complained about how late we were up, or where we were going, or anything along those lines. And when we got a very long layover at the end, they were exceptional, right? And then, of course, they were great representatives of our global aspect. They made friends from Maine, New York, Florida, all across the country, and in some cases even across the globe. It was quite an honor to travel with them and to see how amazing our kids are when we're outside of these walls, which, of course, we know that already. So last year, we had four. This year, upcoming year, we have 32. And so we're excited about that as well, but we are mainly excited about having four exceptional ambassadors. Student voice is always what matters. And so we're looking forward to them speaking to the next group and telling them what they have to look forward to. And with that, I would like to introduce you to two of our four travelers. We have Sammy Burkett and Tanner Blacker Jr. and a senior from LHS.
Hi, I'm Sammy Burkett. I loved traveling around Europe. That was amazing. But probably like my favorite part was the Leadership Summit. It was awesome to work with kids like from around the country, but also from around the world, solving like a problem for a specific person. And I, it was just amazing to collaborate with just so many awesome people.
Alright, yeah, so I'm a senior from Libertyville, like I said. I also was there, I mean, it was definitely like a really cool experience. I'd already traveled a little bit, but this was just kind of different because like you obviously like weren't with like people you had already known. I mean, obviously Sammy goes to my school, but like we weren't really like friends before we went. And like I said, there were only four of us, so it was just a really cool experience, you know, getting to know so many different people and working on them with like these global topics and working to solve problems. There were also many speakers there that I thought were like very interesting. He kind of like motivated you to work through like the problems at hand. And yeah, they just made like learning these new topics like very fun.
Hi, I'm Teresa Almore, and I teach Computer Science at LHS. I also sponsor two clubs, our Coding Cats Club for Computer Science and our Curie Cats Club for Women in STEM. And with the theme of the summit being the influence of technology on society, as you can imagine, there were a lot of great takeaways for me to take back to my students and to my clubs. One highlight for me was getting to hear from Randy Zuckerberg. And she talked to us about being a woman in tech and empowering girls in STEM and how we need to unplug sometimes. That was good to know. And I was also really inspired by Jason Latimer, who reminded me that it's really important as a teacher for me to instill wonder in my students and that I don't necessarily need to give them the answers or tell them what is or is not possible, but rather let them determine that for themselves. I was, participated in a design thinking workshop where I got to practice the design thinking process, which I definitely will be using with my students as we start building gaps this year. And two really interesting presenters, we saw the I-Luminate dancers, which is a really neat combination of computer science and dance. And then we also heard from Glenn Keane, who is a Disney artist, and he talked to us about the intersection of computer science, technology, and art. So those were just a few of the highlights. It was awesome.
So I'm Sarah Greenswag, and I'm a social studies teacher at Libertyville High School. And I'm co-presenting with Amanda Carroll, who's also a social studies teacher at Vernon Hills High School. And the two of us had the opportunity to come together to work for the first time two years ago at the PBL workshop in Napa. And that was sort of the birth of an amazing collaborative workshop, work team that has continued to grow. And we're also teaching a new class, both of us at our respective schools, this American Studies interdisciplinary course. And it's been amazing to work together and learn so much from one another and bring all of our travels and experiences back to the classroom. So when we were getting ready for the Berlin trip, we were trying to come up with a driving question that could really guide our course in American Studies. And the question we came up with was a real challenge. It was one that asked, how do societies and cultures face tragedies in their histories? And we knew, just from doing some background research, that Germany has done a lot of work in this area, right? With the legacy of World War II and the Holocaust, which is a very heavy burden on the German people, they've done a lot to kind of confront their history in a direct way. And it's something that we in the United States do well in some ways and don't do well in other ways. And so that was a question that we wanted to bring to our students in our class. And when we got the itinerary for our trip in Berlin, we were blown away at how much we were going to see that was really going to speak to that. And we have a few examples, just a couple of the memorials that we came across through our travels. Down on the bottom right, you see these gold stones in the ground. Those are called stumbling stones because the idea is that you literally stumble upon them when you're walking around the city. And they commemorate the history of Jewish people in Germany. It marks places where homes and businesses used to be that were lost during World War II. And it gives names and birth and death dates to those people so that, you know, you kind of can't escape it as you're walking around. Another one that we went to see was the Holocaust Memorial, which actually is called the Memorial to Murder Jews in Europe. And I remember even being shocked by the name. That felt really confrontational to me in a way that was unexpected. But Mandy even said to me, you got to face your history. You have to talk about it like what it really was. And so those were just a couple of the lessons and things that we saw that inspired us to bring it back to our class.
And on the bottom here, you notice this memorial. We were on a walking tour one of the days, and this is a square that's outside of a university. And you don't notice until you get closer that in the middle of the square is a room that is full of nothing. It's just empty book, bookshelves that are set there to mark the Nazi book burning that took place in this exact square. And when Sarah and I were at this square, we were like, this is it. Like this is the example we were talking about. All of these memorials together that are commissioned by artists and tell a different story. And it's ways that, you know, you either stumble upon it or you know it's there. But it's part of the story and keeping kind of that history alive, but also not shying away from the tragedies. So what we started to see as we continued on are tons of ways that we could connect this to our own curriculum. And so actually this year, right away, we started talking about Native Americans in our history here in this country. And one of the projects that we did at both schools after learning about the Native Americans was for the students to design a memorial to the history of Native Americans. And so they worked in a group. They could take specific to like the Trail of Tears or something more of like a broader memorial. And this is one of those things too where you don't know where students are going to take it. And both of us were blown away by the ideas that these students came up with. There was everything from a walking path, a race that would raise money for Native Americans today who are struggling. Over here, we had a boarding school. We talked about the experiences of boarding schools. And so the students created this boarding school memorial to Native Americans. And then this idea of student from LHS was the wounded knee. And so this would be a statue and each scar would represent a different struggle. And so this is what students are coming up with, with simply us showing our trip pictures and saying, hey, we saw how they were commemorating their history, like what can we do here?
And then another experience that just sort of happened spontaneously, as things do on a trip like this, was an eye-opening moment where we saw the meeting of two strangers, women who had grown up separately, one in East Germany and one in West Germany, and who met for the first time to do basically a panel discussion of their experiences, really focusing in 1989 when the wall came down. One of them, the one who lived in East Germany, had tried to escape and was in prison for six months when the wall came down. The other one, who was living in West Germany, talks about, you know, just how all of a sudden these things were open to her. She was able to meet people, go places that she had never been to. And they were able to communicate with each other, share their own stories, and find so much common ground in their own histories. And that really inspired us in thinking about, how can we offer our students opportunities to tell their stories, to tell the stories of other people, and to build empathy through that work? And so we started implementing that as sort of a big theme in our curriculum as well. And Mandy's going to talk about how we did that.
So what we saw over and over again were these opportunities that, you know, out there in the world, empathy and communication and all of these things really come, are important to kind of understanding each other. And so part of the curriculum that we brought into American Studies was that students, the first week of class, worked on those important skills. How do we build empathy in our classroom? How do we build those communication skills, those listening skills that are so important? And that are important early on to build a norm for your classroom. And so we, this is one of the workshops we had attended at the Global Summit, was this idea of empathy toys. And so we had our students walk through this activity day two in our classrooms to really understand that they need to listen to each other, that they need to understand where people are coming from. And this was once again amazing to see what they came up with, saying comments like, yeah, I really realized I need to stop and be quiet for, you know, some time and just listen. We're like, yeah, right? Like we all need that, so...
Or like, if you give bad directions at the start and your foundation is off, the whole thing is going to be a mess.
Right? So it was those great moments. And so what we've also decided to do with this idea of empathy is bring it to the staff as well. So coming up, there's going to be two opportunities at, well, you can tell we like to work together even though we're at different schools. So at LHS, Sarah's going to be doing a breakfast and learn, in which she's going to show staff how they can use the same strategy of building empathy in your classroom. And then coming up in our hotspot, we are going to be focusing that in our lunch and learn and just kind of showing teachers also how they can, you know, start to build these important skills with their students. And so all of this, which obviously could go on all night, but came from this experience, which was so amazing.
Hi, I'm Madeline Powell. And they actually did my part for me for the most part, but I'll just add a little bit to that. When I first decided to go on this trip, I thought, oh, it's so important for us to be able to hear the stories of the people in Germany and be able to share those stories with our students. But after this experience, I really learned that it's important to provide students with a format to tell their story. And I thought of, how can we do that here where students actually get to hear firsthand from their peers? What their experience has been here, what was their experience before they came here? And how do we incorporate that to something that's meaningful? So Black Student Union this year is looking at doing a poetry slam. Where students get to tell their perspective. And we're looking at, how do we incorporate other organizations in our poetry slam? So that is kind of what I'm taking away from this, to give our students a chance to have that voice and to share their stories, but more importantly, to learn from their peers and to hear their stories as well.
The emotions come back to me seeing those last pictures because that was, basically Hitler had built a massive air hangar, airplane production facility in the center of Berlin. And it was going to be where the Luftwaffe basically conquered the world. And it was where Hitler's armies and Nazism was meant to literally take off and spread throughout the world. And now, you read and heard a lot this last year about Syrian refugees. And that is the spot where all of the Syrian refugees, a million of them, who have made it to Europe are now being taken to spend time there, being documented, and then to be moved to relocation centers throughout Germany. It's, the irony wasn't lost on any of us, this idea that where Hitler meant to take over the world, the world was now coming to Berlin. And I could go on and on about that. But, you know, the one question you may have as a board is the, some of the value of this to the district. And as a principal, I can tell you that it was extraordinary, our team being together literally 24 hours a day, but, you know, for the 18, 19, 20 hours we were awake. It was non-stop professional conversations. And we were so open, we were learning so much, that we were so open to learning, that it made us able to really talk about, how do we do this with our students? How do we bring these experiences to our kids? And I mean, I would be sitting on the bus after a long day, just wanting to take a nap, and Matt would be talking my ear off about the connections here and what he was going to do in his AP European History. It was just an extraordinary professional development opportunity. And as a principal, we, I got to use this experience. We went to Siemens Global World Headquarters in Berlin. Siemens, as you know, is a huge company, really focuses on innovation, a lot of their engineering and technology. And when I was there, I was looking at both, how do they run their organization? Because as a principal, I wanted to see like how do they run their organization? What could I learn? But also, what does it mean for our students that we're creating and preparing to go into the world and maybe work at a world-class organization like this? And it was fascinating because we were there and they were talking about preparing their workers for the digital economy. And they said that Siemens hired sociologists and sent them all over the world for two years to do a study to say, what do people, sociologists, what do companies, excuse me, what do companies need in order to be successful in the digital economy? And the sociologists came back after two years of traveling all over the world and studying innovation in tech companies. And they created this sign up here, this is in the Siemens office, this kind of, like, kind of graphic there. And basically what they found was about 25 different characteristics and skills that they said their young, new employees need to have for Siemens to remain competitive in the digital economy. And we asked, we said, you know, we don't speak German. Can you just tell us what some of the top ones were? I was fully expecting them to say, kids need to code. Kids need to know how to build robots. Kids need to understand how to, you know, do Java and develop apps. They said, the number one thing you need is teamwork. Absolutely teamwork. They said, nothing happens at Siemens when anybody works alone. No one at Siemens does anything by themselves. So the number one skill they have is teamwork, empathy, communication, and then creativity. They implored us to keep our kids in art classes because they said it is in the art classes where our students learn to create. And this, this global engineering company, German engineering, right? Are wanting what they call the soft skills, but what we started to call the core skills. Because if you think about our dare, and it inspired us so much because our daring mission was already done. And so much of that speaks to those core human skills. And this tech company was basically telling us, hey, we'll teach students the tech stuff. We can't teach them the core human skills that help them relate to one another and to people across the world. So it was very inspiring to me as a principal that our schools and that the work we're doing in our classrooms, yes, we're teaching science and technology and engineering and math, but we're also inspiring our students with this daring mission. And that's exactly what these global companies want us to do.
So before we left for Germany, about two months before we left, we were able to make a connection with one of the executives at Siemens in Buffalo Grove, who was very excited about what we were planning to do with our teachers and our students in Germany. And they were gracious enough to give us a financial, some financial support for our trip, which was great. When we got there, Siemens, I don't know if any of you have ever had the opportunity to be there, but it's such a large organization, employs so many people, it's its own town. So it's Siemenschtott, is that right? So when we, when we got to do the tour, you can see some of the people in the lower-left slide are students who are from a variety of countries, Europe, India, they were from all over the globe, who were there to study and eventually hopefully work for Siemens. When we went to the leadership conference, we were also able to spend some time with them because they were participating in the conference as well. So we got to talk to them a lot about the differences or the similarities between our educational systems and answer their questions. And it was just a great opportunity for dialogue. And our hope is that Siemens, we will continue our discussions and conversations with them and see how our students can eventually get into internships and some of the global programs that Siemens offers.
Hi, my name is Matt Clifford. I'm a social studies teacher here at Vernon Hills High School. And it was a pleasure to spend time with my colleagues. And I want to echo Tom's feelings on it. Any opportunity you have to work with people that are passionate and knowledgeable is an experience worthwhile, let alone if they're your coworkers or they're people internationally. So one of the things we were able to do in our tour Berlin is to examine the multifaceted approach of education in Germany. So through Siemens, we got to see the technological side. But I want to speak a little bit to a private school that we were able to visit there. As you can see in this picture, we have the Evangelische Schule, which is the evangelical private school that we went there. And what was fascinating about this school was their focus on problem or project-based slash learning. So the PBL design, which is something that we were really kind of looking into on this tour, is there a way that you can influence students and really inspire them to take more ownership and passion in their learning? And so, next slide here. So here we have Florian. He is a, he's a bright mind in education, to say the least, a really fascinating individual and somebody that we are going to learn a lot from. But one of the things that struck us when we went in there was the global goals were one of the things that they had posted there that we really focused on here in our district. And they were in German, but we knew what they were because it's the same layout and the same graphic. So it was really fascinating. And the idea behind that is, is that students are trying to solve some sort of issue or problem within the world. So that was embedded into their, their curriculum. You can see in this other picture, this is the layout of how their, their days work. So the days are very different, I think, compared to the way we traditionally run schools in our area because we do different things on different days. But they all kind of focus on marrying content with skill, which is something that struck me. I'm a history teacher, content's really important to me. Sometimes when people are like, oh, we're going to skill, skill, skills. I'm like, bud, I want them to know stuff. And I get a little nervous. But what Florian was able to really show is the effectiveness of both developing skill and content with a model like this. So I've applied it, I'm starting to apply it into my own education because I'm kind of buying into it a little bit, just, just a little. College board's tying my hands a little bit on completely, but you know, we'll do a hybrid. So one of the other features, if you want to go to the next slide here, I won't take up too much time. But one of the other features is the student ownership piece. And it's kind of like, I think of it as dualistic ownership. Because they begin to take ownership of their own education and their own projects that they have to work through and for completion for graduation, they work through these different projects. But the other side of it was, and we can see here in the upper-left, a student at the Evangelische Schule. She was, she helps a lot of her fellow classmates. So there's this issue of team building that's really important in their PBL model. So not only are you supposed to develop your design, you're required to help others develop theirs. And then so they really took advantage of student ownership and empowerment, which was, which was really amazing. And in the end, they really developed a lot of those skills of team building, analysis, critical thinking. And they seem to know a lot too, so a lot of content as well. So a lot of content as well. So it was a really, really awesome experience. I thank you for allowing myself and others to go on it. It was really enriching. Thank you.
I'm Kristy Justin, and I teach math at Libertyville High School. And I'm going to talk about the workshop day that we had in Berlin. We had the opportunity to utilize this collaborative space, and we were with all the teachers who were on this EF tour with us. And each of us came to Berlin with a driving question. So on this day, we had the opportunity to present this driving question and really pick their brains, because in this group were many state teachers of the year. So we had teachers of the year from all over the US, and we thought this is a great opportunity to pick their brain about how they incorporate innovation in their schools. So we presented our driving question, and I just loved how it was a roomful of educators who are forward thinkers, and we could share those ideas. And it really kind of invigorated my spirit to bring back that innovation that we've already started through our district-level innovation teams and our building-level innovation teams. And I hope to continue having those discussions and those meetings to innovate and improve student learning and prepare students best for their future. And this trip has also inspired me and another LHS teacher who went on the trip, Katie Bacher, to incorporate more student travel. And there are a lot of educational tours, but we would like to focus on a service learning tour. So we have put in a proposal for a student service trip to Dominican Republic. And this service trip would support local health initiatives in our rural mountain community. We haven't established those initiatives yet, because they will be established closer to the trip, depending on the needs of that community. But they will focus on health and sanitation, as well as food security, such as building gardens and teaching them how to garden, so that they can focus on that sustainable living piece. So, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. It's really kind of invigorated me and continued that spirit of innovation in the district. So, thank you very much.
Kristy, you mentioned the driving question. Would you mind telling us about your driving question quickly?
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you for that question. So I am very passionate about changing the way students are graded. I feel like as soon as you put a grade at the top of a paper or points at the top of a paper, learning stops. So I am passionate about giving students feedback in terms of how they can improve, rather than giving them points. And I hope that they continue to be passionate about their learning, rather than earning points. And so my driving question was, what they have done to change their grading practices so that it best, it best helps students learn and have them focus on learning, rather than, you know, achieving points. So, thank you so much for that question.
If I could just interject while Rita comes back up here. You saw that the 2018 Teachers of the Year were there, and that was like the teacher of the year for all these states, like the best teacher in these respective states. And it was remarkable, because our staff was shoulder to shoulder with all of these people. And it was so inspiring to see the Teachers of the Year, the so-called, you know, the best people in their states, coming to our staff saying, oh my gosh, that's amazing. How do you do that? How do you do this? How do you do that? And I don't know, I know you as a board understand the just talent we have in our buildings, but I hope the community does as well, because our staff was, with some of the heaviest hitters in public education, standing shoulder to shoulder with them. It was really cool.
And not only did they seek advice from our educators, but they also had many questions about how they might come and live and work in District 128 as well. We do attract the finest of the finest, and we're so fortunate to have experienced this learning tour. It really, kind of, to me, my driving question was, how do we live our Daring mission, right? So how do we invoke our Daring mission in all that we do together as an organization? And this experience really cemented to me this, this true power, like, I think we have the secret sauce, right, of professional learning, because we bring people together of different disciplines, like-minded people with passion for student learning, and we connect them to a mission. And we do that in a way that they're kind of removed from other responsibilities. We're there together to learn and just to learn. And that's really where the magic happens. You saw evidence of that magic from all of the presenters tonight, from the students who experienced the summit. And we're very excited about moving this forward. Now, this experience in Berlin, Sarah mentioned when she saw the agenda, I'll have to say that that agenda was built specifically for us and with us, so that these educators could have the experiences that they did. With a very talented tour director, an Irishman who moved to Germany in 19, before, before 1989, just before the wall came down, and, and thought about what we wanted to see and do and plan that for us. He got us into the refugee center at the Tempelhof Airport. He had the connections that made that happen. So this doesn't happen by chance, it happens by intention and with your support and with the, really the strength of our team and the passion that they put into this experience. Our plan is to repeat it in July of 2019. As Tara mentioned, we have 32 students attending the summit in Davos, Switzerland. And we're going to put out an application for our teachers to participate in a tour that will again take place in Berlin, because the company that designed the trip was so impressed with the quality of our work, that they are not going to go anywhere else. They want to do this again, and they want to have that experience be available to other teachers from across the United States as well. So I can't say enough about this, and I can't say enough that these educators are here tonight, when they have responsibilities at Powderpuff across the street. So we do have a movie available to show you, but I promised everyone with their extra responsibilities that we do our presentation first, and then we could take a look at the movie. So I know you guys have to go. Any quick questions for them before they run?
Fantastic job, is all I like. Thank you. All right, get up.
I will say that the video we showed on opening day is about 20 minutes. We can go ahead and show that.
Show some of it, I can use.
Summit. And I used to think that solving real world problems was a long process, but now I know that if you collaborate with others and share your unique perspectives, it can, you can come to a solution much quicker. A couple of things, an essential question before coming here, I kept thinking about the courses that I'm teaching, this idea of problem-based learning. And I, I haven't integrated problem-based learning in the classical sense, really in my courses. I have like snippets of it, but this idea that I wanted to develop a driving question that drives, takes the whole year, that drives through the whole year. And I think, I teach European history, and that's all I, all I teach now. And so it's kind of this Western thing. So I was thinking about, what is it about the Western world that could really lead to this experience in Berlin, but also could be a driving question? And in history, a lot of times people have tried to start with the modern and reverse your way back, right? So you can trace these modern issues, and kids can really see, I think they're more excited about history then, because they can see the connection to the present. And I think it's a really good idea of building empathy. So I was thinking, what's the crisis of the Western world right now? And I think it's the, you know, the development of extreme nationalism, I think is one of them. So, and here we sit in Berlin, is perhaps one of the greatest examples in the West of nationalism running amok. It's in history, right, the Nazis and all the atrocities that are committed there. So what I wanted to do instead, mine's less pedagogical for me, but more as an idea to drive for my entire students, is to have them start off researching this issue in the Western world. And then we would, I've already put together projects that then trace us through. And I want them to, I want to see if I can get them to, to figure out which one is really, through history, going to make a more just and equal and stable world. So that's kind of where I'm going right now. So my question, when I'm working on this project, is to drive my whole year. So I appreciate any, any feedback and help in that, because this is my first kind of endeavor into like a problem-based learning-type project that is completely year-long, so. I took each of the six letters and incorporated something small. And I thought that would just weave it through the year, instead of just doing one thing once in the year, if I could, like, you're exactly what you're saying, is if you could put a little bit in all the time, it just makes it more routine.
Kind of, you know, touchy subjects, whether it is race, gender, you know, all sorts of isms, if you will. And so I think I want them to be comfortable with the people that are in their classroom, you know, that they can ask questions, they can talk about their feelings and their beliefs and, you know, and the different, you know, articles and the different things that come up in the news, whether it's, you know, police brutality, or, you know, the Me Too movement, and stuff like that. So that comfort level, I think, is really important. So valuing and building relationships within our classroom, I think this is really, really helpful. You know, as I said, you know, sociology just kind of, it's everywhere I can find daring, so it's just kind of cool. And so my, my view of all of this is that, you know, in each of these different areas, for them to be able to kind of, you know, initially, you know, teaching them what Daring is all about, but then for them to go, oh, that's really ambiguous, I, you know, I get that, you know, I see that, or I see the diversity and why that's important and what that makes us. So this, you know, I love this. This, this really spoke to my heart in a lot of ways.
I used to think that it was going to be difficult to add our new Daring mission into my chemistry curriculum. After witnessing the transformation at the Tempelhof Airport, engaging with students at Siemens Vocational School, and witnessing the energy and determination of students at the Global Youth Summit, I now know that I am fully invested and excited to add the new Daring mission into my class. My motivation to make this happen comes from the words of wisdom from Randy Zuckerberg, Glenn Keane, and Jason Latmer. When facing the complicated and the impossible, together we can break down walls to open up paths of wonder and imagination.
Hi, my name is Sammy Burkett, and I'm a junior at LHS, and I just got back from the Global Leadership Summit. I used to think that some things were possible, but now I know that impossible is a word that we made up, and I need to keep wondering and being curious and acting smart.
Passionate about computer science, but I'm even more passionate that I believe my students have the power to change the world. I know they do, I just don't think they believe it themselves. So I want, I want them to believe they can change the world, I also want them to be able to prepare for an awesome career, and I want them to believe in themselves. And in particular, there's a lot of populations that are underrepresented in the tech industry. And so I really want to have everyone feel empowered, that they can, that they belong and that they can do it.
So I decided to put the, like, the thing there, so that even if I'm not saying it, it's just like, hey, here's a question. Sign out, you're doing, you're dreaming, you're whatever. So I thought, like, a question I could ask regularly is, how could you use this to help? Like, what could you do with this?
Comes in admissions, and what we did was, when we brought it to committee, the things that got kids in was not the grades, because everybody has amazing grades, if you're applying to us, or outstanding test scores, but it was those little pieces that they could talk about in their essay. These are the things we did, this is how I grew from it. And that is what we talked about in committee. We didn't even talk about grades, we talked about their experience. Right. And the kids who could write about it, who were able to kind of articulate what they learned and how it changed them, how it impacted them. Those are the kids who got in.
So how do we provide opportunities for our students to have those experiences that they can write about and provide evidence for?
It's a very project-oriented or project-based learning, because in the first semester, we had a small project within our class, where we formed teams and created a device to measure the net frequency, where we were capable of put all of our knowledge, we gained it the first semester in, and as a team accomplished a task to, yeah, have something which can measure the net frequency. And further on, it's like the tradition that we have, so to speak, that you have in the second semester, a project which runs over the whole semester, and that actors are kind of like supporting you during the whole semester to gain knowledge about what you want to achieve within your project. And this year is a very special project of the semester, because we are glad to work together with two different countries. So there are Siemens apprentices from Australia and Siemens apprentices from Kenya, which were mixed together with us, the German students, into groups to work on a special project. And the topic for that year was to include the Siemens Mainz sphere.
Students coming up with an, either a, like, building a tangible project, or coming up with a program or a plan that can actually be implemented in our community. So that's kind of where I started with. And in order to make it a passion project, it has to be something that the kids choose. So my driving essential question is, what will we develop individually or as a class to positively impact the environment? And, you know, after looking at Emily's guides and what makes a good assessment question, I feel like this is student-driven, it's very open, but I think the question is going to change once the class actually determines the focus they want to do.
So basically, our girl's name is Amy, and she's having trouble with mental health, and she wants like a way to be able to talk about it, because like, it scares her to talk to her friends or family, and like, hotlines, it's like hard for her to connect with like, you know. So basically, this watch is like, like, something that like gives her something to talk to. So it's just kind of like sad. She can like tap like a button on it, and it can call like an Uber sort of thing, and it will like pick her up and take her to do something like brand new. Because like, in your daily life, if you do the same thing every single day, it's like, it gets boring and you feel bad, you know? So like, that's what like Uber's meant to do, because it's to get you out of your house and get you to do something fun and new. And also, try like, using your phone, and it like senses like when like you're about to feel sad. And then they can contact like, you're like a personal like coach, and like, that person can like send you like a good message, or like, you like, just so you know, like, you're maybe about to feel upset, like, stay strong, and like, maybe go do something like active, get out of the house or something like that. So that's basically what we're doing. We're making progress.
So imagine you're at lunch, and the bell just rang, and you have to get to class, but you want to sort, you don't have time to sort your trash, but you want to make sure you're recycling and sorting your trash correctly. So with this, you just have to put all your trash into a trash can, and it's going to automatically sort through your trash. And based off of like texture and weight, it's gonna be able to shoot the trash into the correct spot, recycling in the correct spot, and the compost box.
I used to think as a teacher, I needed to have all the answers. Now I know, it's far more important for me to instill a sense of wonder in my students.
I fundamentally believe that we don't actually teach what we teach, that we should, you know, there's, there's no real reason for us to be teaching history, in the sense of the facts and the dates and everything, that there's a fundamental thing that we should be teaching. And trying to get us kind of, what are we doing with Davos? Whether that's teaching problem-solving or creativity or collaboration, you know, these more kind of foundational human skills. And so, in my case, I was focusing just on one of those skills, which I feel is empathy. And how do you teach empathy through the medium of whatever it is that you're teaching, whatever that content area is? And then on top of that, and then, you know, teaching empathy...
And then on top of that, and then, you know, in how, teaching empathy, again, so through the medium, I mean, I'm not like taking a separate day out or whatever to go and have a discussion about empathy, but just what is it that we do? Because we know that being in an orchestra, being a musical group, that can build empathy. So what is it about orchestra that does that? And then, of course, how do I assess if I'm being, you know, being effective at that? You know, or what exactly am I, like, make a lesson plan to, I want to kind of focus on this idea, how do I know that I'm being successful?
I used to think it was only important for our students to have the opportunity to tell their story. Now I know it's not only important for our students to be able to have a platform to tell their stories, but for them to also hear the stories of their peers and to learn from those stories as well.
I want to use those questions that came from those cards and type them up. And I plan to give like a different one each Monday, and it's just like the first three minutes of class or something, like while everyone, while I'm getting settled, this is what you could do every Monday, tell me something about yourself.
Started a brand new blended chemistry course next year, and I was really focused on what can I do in this course? And with that, I had a very chemistry-focused mindset. And going through these whole experiences, it's really showed me to go with the first and first, student second. So I kind of changed my question to how can I create more personalized learning experiences that enhance the whole student? So how can I open up more long, long conversations with students and get to know them more on an individual level? How can I take my structured day that I have right now and give students flexibility and freedom and creativity throughout the current structure that we have? So any feedback or tips that you guys have, that you've used, that have worked, or even areas that you know haven't worked, I'd be definitely greatly appreciative of all that people.
Experiences open your mind. We used to think, but now we don't. I used to think that people were known as refugees, now I call them homeowners. In July of 2018, I traveled with a group of educators to Berlin, Germany. One of the days, we visited the site of the Tempelhof Airport, which was formerly used to construct the Nazi air force. Today, it stands as a welcoming center for new arrivals coming from all over the world looking for a new start.
Share your open-minded experiences with the hashtag O M X.
I used to think the books I love would take me anywhere, and that the primary sources and research and documents and graphics I read and analyze convey multiple perspectives. While that is true, now I know that learning in different locations, near and far, is far richer and deeper, allowing me to understand the unique people, culture, and context of each location. Place-based learning builds empathy and bridges and breaks down the walls that separate us far beyond the ability of words on a page to do so.
Learning this to like projects, especially also doing this student talks where the teacher really sits down to you and listens, what do you, what do you have to do, or what your hobbies are. And, and yeah, you do that step by step. I'm learning how it is, it's okay to say what I feel. I can define as you want. And yeah, you learn us about skills, how to interact with other students. And of course, that helps speaking on a one, you know, you can, you can do this, and they will listen to you, and they will react nicely, right? And you're not going to have to actually say something.
I used to think of failure or being wrong as something to avoid. Now I know that we learn more from our failures than our successes. In fact, it's by making mistakes that we learn and grow.
The largest arrow?
Yeah.
With that as your base with the grooves up, the arrow part pointing to is pointing to my right, so you're going to do that.
Oh, no, no. Just, no, just hit your right hand.
Oh, hey!
Okay, so the arrow is flat, the grooves are pointing up.
Yes.
And up, like if my hands are on top of the table, I can feel the grooves?
Yes.
Okay, and the arrow's pointing to my right hand.
Then the triangle connecting piece with the smooth.
For resilient and healthy, I want them to focus on their mistakes and not get down about it, but find a positive in each mistake.
And originally, we had like sort of specific essential questions for different projects that we wanted to do, but through this experience, we've sort of broadened our question to sort of be a driving question for the entire course, which is more about how do we deliberately create safe spaces that empower students to share experiences, highlight their passions, and learn from each other? And then we have a few of our more specific project ideas below that, which have to do with a lot of the themes we've already heard about empathy, listening, understanding, you know, tragedy and, and how to overcome trauma and instances of oppression and injustice in our history.
Hi, I'm Anna Hurd, I'm a junior at LHS, and I just got home from the Berlin Global Leadership Summit. I used to think that technology was reaching its peak, but now I know that it's limitless and we just have to keep exploring.
After attending the conference in Berlin, we had the opportunity to work with teachers in Europe and visit schools and check out the European system, particularly the German model, both of the private and public school model, as well as the involvement of corporations in education. And upon reflecting on that, one of the things that I really used to believe that I took away from this was I used to believe that PBL was just a supplement, a way to add to increasing and deepening learning among students. But after spending time in the schools in Berlin and working with those teachers, one of the things I realized is that PBL can be integrated fully into a curriculum. And what it really does is it really helps marry content with skills, rather than keeping those things separate or letting one take over the other. The German models are a really good job of emphasizing both content knowledge and skills knowledge together.
For the nimble thinking, what if Wednesdays? So like, I don't know if this is the first one I have for the circumference area lab, like what if the value of pi was seven? I know that's ridiculous, but like.
I don't know.
It's like they're going to be.
I used to think my job as a high school teacher was to help students turn into mature, responsible adults. But now I know that in order for our students to become responsible adults, I need to help them maintain their curiosity, their imagination, and their ability to make believe. That is going to make our world a better place.
You know, we're all teachers. We, we're teachers because we care about students and we want our students to grow. And so I thought, how can I change grading practices to really promote student growth? Rather than students' goal being the accumulation of points, right? They get the good grade because they accumulate the most points. So how can we change our grading practices to really promote that student growth? Maybe involve some idea of growth mindset in there. And then also the second bullet, what I have on my poster there to the left, so how can grading practices be improved to promote student growth? But also to best prepare students for their own unique future, because yes, maybe certain grading practices are good for the students that are going into a university, but from seeing the school, I was very surprised to hear that about half of their students go to a university and the other half don't. They may take a gap year, they may go into vocational studies. So how can we use grading practices to just best prepare all of our students for whatever pathway? I would love to get your input on ways that you have changed your grading practices, you've seen teachers change their grading practices, or just maybe one of your ideas that you have even thought of to change your grading practices. So this is what I'm most looking forward to, is getting your thoughts and ideas to share with me and each other.
I used to think that one of the most important parts of my job was to tell the stories of our district to our community. But now I know that it's equally important to share stories and experiences from beyond our community, our state, even our country, with our students and staff to help them realize new possibilities, reimagine the high school experience, and to become D128 daring.
My question is really looking at how do we use storytelling to give our kids a chance to walk around in someone else's shoes? Because we've really looked at diversity and helping kids understand other people's perspectives and to have empathy. So my question is how do we use storytelling, not necessarily in a classroom, but through our clubs, our organizations, and schools, to give kids that opportunity?
The trip to Berlin made clear in my mind the importance of a physical presence in developing empathy within our students and how this ultimately leads to the education of better human beings. Of course, there was the powerful experience of being in the shadow of the Berlin Wall and seeing how it cut through neighbors and families. But perhaps even more powerful were the stories we heard of the people who lived through that experience. I now know that this physical presence of the actual space or of the human face is what will connect our students to what we really want them to learn.
My name is Tanner Black, I'm a senior at Libertyville High School. I just got back from the Global Leadership Summit in Germany. I used to think that it'd be difficult to create like friendships and talk with people from different countries and all over the world, but now I know that people across the world share many of the same interests, and it's easy to create friendships that'll
Rita, any other comments?
Patiently, thank you.
All right, great.
We had to share about our exciting venture, creating a time before the district attend and to have the impact that they're having.
Well, we felt, we felt like it was very important, particularly with the creation and now the implementation of our daring mission statement. This is the most important thing that we'll do because it is really the path forward for this school district. So we took more time than we normally do for the ed presentation because of that foundation piece, not only for the board but for the community, that will see that as well. And we want to thank Rita for her leadership, Tom and John, the district leadership team. And I want to give one more time a shout-out to Siemens International, Ken DeTina, who is in our area in Buffalo Grove. We had a business relationship with Siemens several years ago. They did several millions of dollars of security work. They're the vanguard of school security and business security. As one of their many businesses, they gave us a very nice amount of money to support the trip over there, knowing that we were going to be at Siemens over there. So thank you again to Siemens for their support of that project.
I just wanted to make one, one more comment in regards to financing the trip. You know, many districts will hire a speaker to come in and, and address the staff for an opening day presentation. And that speaker is often inspirational, but it's a one-shot deal that everyone's in the audience hearing the same thing, and you don't often have time to act on that and develop something. So I kind of see this investment in our educators who become the internal experts and leaders who stand alongside their colleagues every day, doing that inspirational work as an alternative way to provide professional learning to our staff and a more effective one.
Actually, I have a quick question. I'm a little confused about next year, is it another global leadership summit in Berlin that 32 students are going to?
Thirty-two students are attending the Global Unit Leadership Summit as an ed tour that you've, that you've already approved.
So it's typical to our educational tours that we've offered in the past, student-funded.
That's the one in Switzerland.
It, it is in Switzerland, and they're, what, what the, so the company that offers the Global Youth Leadership Summit also provides opportunities for educators to connect to the summit. And because this year was so successful in Berlin, they are repeating that Berlin period prior to the summit in Davos. So they're, they're bringing teachers to Berlin again to experience the trip that we really designed with them because it was so powerful.
Any other questions? All right, thank you again, great job.
Thanks.
Okay, students, school board reps, we'd like to go first.
We can do it again.
So to start off with athletics, the LHS athletic department rolled out a new initiative with Wild of the, Wildcat of the Week Award. Students can get nominated by their coaches and receive a certificate and a shout-out on Twitter. The program rewards athletes for excellence both on and off the field. And we'd like to recognize one girl's country, or one girl's cross-country runner in particular, Peyton Golos, who singled out for her extraordinary sportsmanship at the end of the race. She was seen by other parents cheering on not only our team but others, and afterwards, parents sent photos of Peyton to our school to make sure her extraordinary sport, to make sure her extraordinary sportsmanship didn't go unnoticed. As for regular updates, boys and girls golf are heading out to the conference championship tournaments. The boy soccer team got local news coverage on Comcast, and the team also had over 100 participants in a packing session at Feed My Serving Children. The football team had an outstanding week with a 49-6 victory over Waukegan, and they now face Lake Zurich in their homecoming game. All levels of the Wildcat girls volleyball team won against Warren this past week, and the Cats also collected clothing for victims of the fire in Buffalo Grove. Libertyville is hosting three IHSA regional events this year: boy soccer, volleyball, and cross-country. And at the last cross-country invite, Libertyville placed second overall, and the team is pleased with their performance. Finally, the girls' cross-country team also gave back through service work, attending a Feed My Serving Children session. For school ongoings, homecoming is quickly approaching, and the theme is Las Vegas, with spirit days all of this week. A new and exciting event this year is an all-school bingo game. There will be many prizes and a few mega prizes for those who cover their entire card by Friday. For homecoming, this week we have the football game, the parade, and the dance. We started window painting. The whole town is getting involved in the preparation. This passing Saturday, many clubs and teams were downtown painting storefront windows. The businesses downtown are so generous to donate their spaces, and the clubs and teams are incredibly grateful for it. It was a day of fun, and now the already bustling stretch of Milwaukee Avenue is filled with Vegas-themed paintings to coordinate with the theme of this year's dance.
Throughout the week, various groups will be working on their floats for Saturday's homecoming parade. The day is set to be fest, to be a festification for the whole community. This coming Friday, we'll have our annual homecoming assembly. The week's spirit day, the week's spirit days will culminate in the class color wars, and the assembly will show the entire school's spirit. So on Wednesday, the annual powder puff game will take place. Senior girls will form a team and participate in an eight-minute game of flag football. Half of the teams participating will be assigned to the orange team and the other half to the black team. The team with the most victories at the end of the night will win. And as we just experienced, a few of the teachers will be coaching. So around a month ago, the AP Environmental Science classes decided to research the cause of the fish kill in Butler, Butler Lake. They're excited with their results, and the mayor, Terry Webler, even stopped by to have a discussion with the classes. The AP Environmental Science students are excited about their opportunity to present their findings to the village and the Board of Education. The carpool lottery is starting up for students who choose to carpool. Winners will get gift cards to get free lunches, and restaurants are already joining in on the fun, gifting out, gifting out to the high school gift cards to distribute after reading out about our carpooling system and its perks in the news. The week of September 3rd was not only a very welcome four-day week, but also Yellow Ribbon Week. So Yellow Ribbon Week is an annual event which brings attention to the importance of mental health and helps us to normalize discussing it so that we can be healthier as a student body. Throughout the week, there was a stand outside the cafeteria where students could get information and small items like yellow ribbons to pin to their bags. To get the week started, there was a kickoff event with Life of a Wildcat on September 1st. Attendees decorated the school with yellow and positive health messages and enjoyed food and time in small groups to discuss mental health. Freshmen in particular got a chance to discuss mental health during their weekly link crew meetings. Leaders led group discussions about support systems and personal connections to mental health in order to encourage freshmen to consider it themselves.
All right, so an, an ongoing program which focuses on student health is the Wellness Leader Program. The leaders had their first meeting on September 11th. Leaders discussed what they feel is healthy and unhealthy at our school. Healthy food options and the late start time were both lauded, while they also had constructive discussions regarding drug and alcohol use, specifically vaping. So to handle the growing alcohol concern, school and medical professionals came in for the Real Talk, a candid conversation about underage drinking in Libertyville. Sponsored by the youth health group, Libertyville Connect, the event aimed to shed light on the issue of underage drinking in Libertyville. This event provided another angle by making it a family event, so that the discussion comes from many different perspectives. The event was so popular that the first event was fully booked, and a second date was already added so that more families could participate. This event featured two Libertyville High School student speakers, Matt Smith and Maya Grivilovich. At the event, they spoke about their prevention-oriented leadership experience and how they are hoping to influence our student body and help build a stronger, healthier culture at Libertyville. The principal's advisory board recently had their first meeting. This year's board is composed of 35 students from all grade levels, who will work together throughout the year to advise the principal, principal about issues at Libertyville High School, gathering feedback from the student body and working towards making our school a better place. Board members will be involved in a committee of their children, choosing out of six options: rules and policies, educational innovations and learning spaces, campus sustainability, culture and student life, public relations, and health and wellness. From the first meeting, we can already see that the board meetings have many ideas for how they want to help shape our school. So then finally, for fine arts, the 2019 Illinois All-State Production will be in the height.
the hikes. Albert Sterner is a junior who is in all-state this year. When we spoke to him, he raved about the experience, saying, "All-state is really an incredible experience as you're with so many like-minded kids from Illinois who all want to put on something stellar and amazing. The community and environment that is striving to do their best really pushes me to do my best." He went on to discuss the significance of the production, saying, "If I continue to do theater with these, these are the kids I'm going to be doing it with in the professional world. These are Illinois's best in terms of high school theater, and making those connections is what's extraordinary about this program." And that's about it.
Okay. So tonight, we are recognizing sophomore Magdalena Zuchek, who recently traveled to Brazil for this year's 2018 Junior Pan-American Karate Championship to compete in the 14-15-year-old 54-kilogram-plus committee division. Magdalena took home a gold medal in her division and has now been named the Pan-American Champion for her age. This is Magdalena's third time at the Pan-American Championship and her second time taking the gold. Magdalena competed against some of the best athletes in the world and was one of only seven athletes to take home the gold for the United States in the PKF Championship. Today, we have Magdalena here, and she will be showing us a short demonstration with Dr. Gilliam.
Wait a minute. Mr. Huber had volunteered.
Nah. Here we go. Here we go. She's waiting.
It's really short.
All right. You ready?
For sure.
Okay. Here we go.
Yo! Usually don't have my hair in my face.
Is it it?
I mean.
One more.
Oh, okay. Yo!
Awesome. Give her a hand. A little Q and A here. So tell us a little bit, how long have you done this?
Probably nine years since I was six.
Since you were six. How many hours a week do you put into it?
Six. I mean, not that bad when the season's off, but then when, like in the summer, I train every day like two, three hours a day. So that kind of fills up.
Yeah, that's amazing. And so we read a little bit about your accomplishments in the Pan and Games. Where are you headed? What's your goal? Where is this going for you?
I mean, Olympics are always a goal, and karate was just added in the 2020, which I won't be able to participate in. I'll be too young, but goal is kind of 2024, possibly getting to there, so.
That's good. Give her a hand.
So this week, Vernon Hills will be celebrating its annual homecoming week filled with all kinds of spirited festivities. Yesterday, student council members of all classes came to the school to decorate their assigned hallways for our Hollywood homecoming theme. This morning, Vernon Hills students stucked out in different jerseys for Jersey Day, were greeted by streamers and golden Hollywood balloons in our main foyer. Right now, our senior girls are pitted against one another in a friendly but competitive game of flag football for our senior girls' powder puff game. One of our fellow board representatives, Caitlin Dohler, is there right now hoping to take home the win. Congratulations to our national merit semifinalists Alexa Pomeranz, Jeffrey Zhang, Valerie Smikala, Ben Gershenko, Alice Zhang, Jimmy McDonald, and Caitlin Dohler. These seven seniors were recognized for their outstanding performance on the 2017 PSAT and will have the opportunity to receive a national merit scholarship. Congratulations semifinalists. This past weekend, freshmen of Vernon Hills Backlight Theater put on a great show of Edgar Néverez's The Halloween Tree. The casting crew has been working tirelessly for weeks on perfecting their performance, and the outcome was fantastic. Senior Jillian Bowes has earned a spot in the National Association for Music Education's 2018 All-National Honors Ensembles on November 25th to the 28th at Disney's Coronado Supreme Resort at Walt Disney World in Orlando, Florida. This is the second consecutive year that Jillian has been selected for this honor. Students were chosen through a very selective audition process and competed against top students for a spot in these national honor ensembles. Congratulations, Jillian. Last week, the career advisory board met for the first time. Juniors Darcina Chua and Darsika Asher are the very first student advisors on the council. Both these juniors were chosen by FBLA advisor Mrs. Benson for their outstanding potential. The two are very excited to be a part of the council and are working hard to make Vernon Hills a better place. These juniors serve to give a voice to the students of Vernon Hills in the council and are even working to make our mission statement daring and inspiring presence in our community. On October 8th, girls volleyball will be participating in the annual Volley for a Cure at Libertyville High School. The girls will be playing to raise money and have tons of special promotions to support breast cancer survivors. This Friday, Vernon Hills varsity soccer and football will be playing their homecoming games to help Vernon Hills students get excited for the homecoming dance this Saturday. Soccer will be playing against Rolling Meadows, and football will be playing against Deerfield, hoping to take home another win on the season. Vernon Hills is one of the only schools that has both soccer and a football homecoming game, and we are so proud of our athletes' hard work. Congratulations goes out to the girls' cross-country team on their third consecutive win at the Lake County Invite.
So last Friday, Vernon Hills High School was featured on Fox 32 for the pep rally Friday segment, and reporter Anthony Ponce walked around the school with Dr. Gilliam as we had drum lines and cheerleaders parade behind them. Especially with all the excitement building up for Homecoming Week, it was no challenge for Vernon Hills High School students to bring out the best of our school's spirit early in the day and showcase what really makes this school and school district so great. Vernon Hills High School senior Bobby Black won first place and $1,400 at the Leonard Falcon International Euphonium and Tuba Festival held August 10th to 13th in Twin Lake, Michigan. And the festival attracts thousands of top players from around the globe for a college and high school tuba and euphonium competition. So congrats, Bobby. With the school-wide encouragement of the remind system this year, teachers have found an accessible way to communicate with their students through cell phones. However, although it has brought some convenience to the staff, there's been some recent instances where it hasn't been so great on the receiving end. So we've had teachers send remind messages to parents instead of students. There have been times when students get added to groups that they are not a part of, and this has caused some confusion for students early this year, and it seems to have become an issue that we may have to take a look at. Coming up on October 10th is our annual Rite Assembly, where we encourage freshmen to build respect, integrity, and trust for themselves, their peers, and their school. And this experience has not only allowed students to reflect on how our actions may impact ourselves and others, but has also become an opportunity for freshmen to meet others like themselves. And the senior leaders will be running activities that revolve around these themes that day. That same morning, as juniors are taking their PSATs, seniors and sophomores will be given service opportunities at Feed My Serving Children. And this is another great example of how Vernon Hills High School students are going above and beyond for our community. We also had our Yellow Ribbon Week last week, where we raised awareness on mental health and suicide prevention. Awareness stickers, petting therapy dogs, and in-class lessons and content on playing the lifesaver role has taught us the importance of mental health. So a few weeks earlier, we had our second annual Summer Reading Fest, where all English class students of the same period met in the gym to talk about the book that they chose to read over the summer. And we will be having, we had summer reading fest leaders selected by teachers run discussions with other students that had read the same book in small group discussions of four to seven students. And what I liked most about this event, and I think I can speak for many others, is that it makes reading a book over the summer more enjoyable than having the added pressure of overanalyzing a book, getting ready for a test on it on the first week of school. So through collaborative effort through the school administration and Vernon American Legion Post 1247, Vernon Hills Athletic Complex has an official state historical marker that recognizes how the fields, once featured runways, used to train naval pilots to land on aircraft carriers during World War II. So pilots in training would rehearse takeoff and landing procedures from these auxiliary fields and onto two aircraft carriers that were in Lake Michigan. And almost 18,000 pilots graduated through this program, including first U.S. President George H.W. Bush. And during the week prior to it, we had U.S. history classes do lead mini lessons each day before the ceremony that took place before the Cougars' first football home game.
All right. Great job, everybody. Thank you. All right. You guys are free to leave whatever you want to do. Okay. Superintendent's report. Morgan News.
Yes, the district did such a great job. So my list is a little shorter tonight than it normally is, so thank all of you. Again, VHHS senior James McDonald has been named this year's VHHS winner of the Daughters of American Revolution Good Citizens Award. Winner selected following a vote by faculty for the senior student who best exhibits the following characteristics: dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism. The following LHS students have earned induction into the International Thespian Society, ITS, as active members of LHS Group 1344 in 2017-18 school year. Ethan Chen, Abigail Seema, Julie DeNoya, Jacob Kemp, Bailey Latka, Alice Lilidoll, Erin McCain, Haley Knoll, Zoe Randolph, Kirsten Tawander, and Lynn Tran. LHS graduates Ian Liberto, LHS 01, and Cassie Austin, LHS 13, have been chosen for the cast of the Broadway national tour of Hello, Dolly. District 128 Communications Director Mary Toddrick and Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Rita Fisher received the Golden Achievement Award of Excellence in the 2018 Communications Contest sponsored by the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, or INSpro. They received the honor at the September 14th INSpro Communications Contest Awards Luncheon in Oak Brook. Golden Achievement Awards are presented for projects that encompass excellence in all aspects of a public relations program, from research to planning, implementation, and evaluation. Mary Toddrick and Rita Fisher received the award for their entry, District 128's daring new mission. So congratulations to Mary and Rita. Next on the superintendent's report tonight is an annual report that we simply have to share with the board, which Dan mentioned at committee meetings. So Dan, you want to make a couple of comments about the administrator and teacher compensation report?
Yeah, this is required by state statute that this is presented to the board before October 1st, and so it's for the prior school year. So that's the information there, and then this information is posted on our district website.
Okay. No new information, just a repeat of that for the benefit of our public, and we've met our obligation to do that reporting to the board. Next on the superintendent's agenda tonight, at this time of year, we have collected data from the past school year on our performance recognition bonus that's part of the teacher contract that continues in the one-year agreement this year. Originally, that recognition bonus had five components in the mix for consideration. And over the past few years, the state no longer tests PERC at the high school level. And also, the ACT test is no longer given to all juniors. It's now the SAT test. So we really have three remaining criteria, and the criteria are percentage of students taking advanced placement examinations, percentage of students scoring three, four, or five on advanced placement exams, and the percentage of students participating in one or more student activities and/or athletic teams, which we've always placed a high value on in this district. So I'm pleased to report to you tonight that the district has met all three of the remaining three criteria. And again, our trend chart on student participation and student achievement academically, as well as extracurriculars, continues to be very strong. So I am recommending to you tonight that we authorize the performance recognition bonus payment, which usually happens the first Friday in December. And in addition to the teachers, this was conceived as a team recognition across the district, unlike Merripay, which is really targeted to individuals. This is really a recognition for the entire district under the philosophy that everything everyone does in the district every day ends up having an impact on whether our kids are more successful and they're more involved. So making the recommendation tonight that not only that we provide that bonus to the teachers, but as we have from the beginning of this recognition bonus that is also given to administrators and our support staff or ESP.
Okay.
Just looking for a motion.
Is there a motion to certify and authorize a performance recognition bonus?
So who?
For second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Benson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Castle?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luz?
Aye.
Munster?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
And just want to note about the performance recognition bonus. The performance recognition bonus continues, but is subject to negotiations as part of the negotiation to teachers and any process, so that'll be subject to continued collective bargaining moving forward as we start to bargain this year for the end of this one-year contract that we have moving forward. Okay. Next on the superintendent's report tonight, LHS Pool Project Update. Mark.
Good evening, everyone. Masonry is moving along. We're starting to look like a building. The north wall has gone up. It's almost complete. They have started working on the vapor barrier on the north wall. The south wall has been started, as well as the bearing wall that's going to be the connection between the pool and the building itself. They're working on the overhead plumbing for the roof drains, so we can get scheduled to get the vapor barrier put on the top of the roof. Once that's in place, the site will be waterproof on the inside, and then the final roof will go on after that. They're working on this week finalizing the water main and the rest of the storm sewer on-site, so we can begin to prepare for putting the road around the building and the parking lot and getting all that base in. Are projects still on schedule at this point?
Budget?
Yep.
Yep. We're on budget.
Yes.
Okay. So just let's repeat that for the record. So the question was?
Still on budget.
The answer was?
Yes.
Okay. We're good.
Yes.
All right. Did they answer your question, Mr. Luz?
Deeply.
Okay. All right. Great. I think we're going to save the update on the additional 69-space LHS parking plan. We have one item on the F and F part of the agenda tonight, so we'll just give an update on that, and we're going to be moving forward pretty quickly on that. Okay. Next on the superintendent's report, we had two FOIA requests this month, and as we are required to do, I will read those into the record. The first was received on 8/23/18 from Adam Andrajewski from Open the Books, American Transparency, 200 South Frontage Route, Suite 106 in Burr Ridge, Illinois. We request the following in regard to Prentice Lee, Libertyville Community High School District 128 Superintendent: All employment contracts, amendments, and addendums since the beginning of employment at the district to the present time. That's about 14 years, as I recall. The current accrual balances of unused sick days, holidays, and vacation days broken out by employee name, position, title, current salary, or pay rate, and date of hire. The district policies in regard to cashing in unused sick days, holidays, and vacation days. Bryant did the follow-up. The response date was, deadline was 8/30/18. We responded at 8/29/18, and the time spent was three hours. And I will note for the record, we receive these types of requests from time to time. 8/27/18, Josh Fine, Senior Segment Producer, josh.fine@hbo.com, just that HBO. HBO Real Sports with Brian Gumbel. For the school year 2007-8, 1. The percent of the high school population that was eligible for free or reduced lunch; 2. The number of boys who played high school football; 3. The number of boys who played high school football who were eligible for free or reduced lunch. For the 2012-13 school year, 1. The percent of the high school population that was eligible for free or reduced lunch; 2. The number of boys who played high school football; 3. The number of boys who played high school football who were eligible for free or reduced lunch. For school year 2017-18, the percent of the high school population that was eligible for free or reduced lunch; the number of boys who played high school football; the number of boys who played high school football who were eligible for free or reduced lunch. Bryant Kelly did the follow-up along with LHS and VHHS Student Services Personnel. The response deadline was 9/4. We responded on 8/30/18 and spent approximately four hours compiling that response. So we had seven hours in total roughly on the two FOIA requests, responding to the two FOIA requests we received this month. And Pat, that completes the superintendent's report.
Hold tight. Couple things, three things actually. Back to the FOIA.
Yes.
Bryant, this is more for Bryant. For Adam, it's Open the Books, Mr. Transparency. Can you explain what number two exactly is if he asked for Prentice's information? Can you explain what number two exactly is? If he asked for Prentice's information alone, what exactly is number two by employee? Isn't that by default what he asked for?
So I think he, I think in his email, he cut and pasted. And he had requested at other districts, a lot of people. So when he said by employee, we, it could, part of it when I got the FOIA request, it was in different font. So it looks like he cut and pasted a lot of stuff. So when he said by employee, our only employee was Prentice.
Okay, thank you for that. This is more of a question to maybe Dan, or we voted to certify the bonus?
Yes.
Can, we have a one-page summary perhaps at the next meeting that just shows what the metrics of the five were at the beginning of the contract, the five things that you talked about, and how they progressed down to three and how those things, thank you. Again, we probably should have seen this prior to the vote, but yeah. And again, the bonus is by contract. So this, again, you attest that these are good and we're all good. Thank you for this.
Did you have enough for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I think we're good there.
Sorry, I had that in my cloud.
No, no, all good. And then the final thing was, maybe at the next committee meeting, can you educate us on the concept of, there's been a lot of discussion regarding shared services, how that works in communities. I think our Mundaline may have just done something recently.
Yeah, with one of their three districts, one of three of their elementary districts.
So maybe, could you set us some time, maybe at the next FNF, just to kind of
Sure.
address any questions or just educate us on what that is? Because again, we know it's not consolidation and, you know, it's different things to different people. So I'd appreciate if we could do that.
Absolutely. And it's not a panacea. As Kevin has noted, Mundaline, Mundaline actually has three elementary districts that feed into them. Their shared services agreement is only with one of those three districts. And there are a number of factors that go into that that I've talked to several of you about, you know, independently in terms of that. But certainly not a panacea. And I would just always caution us, along with the other local boards, that our seven board members in our administration are really here to ensure the high quality of our district, first and foremost, moving forward as we enter that discussion. But I'll be happy to outline some of those things, Kevin, at the next committee meeting.
Thanks. Okay, ready?
Yep, that's it.
All right. So next, the consent vote agenda is listed. We did review this a week ago. So if I could ask for a motion to approve, the consent vote agenda is listed.
No vote.
Or second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No, roll call please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Passo?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Munster?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Baxton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Facilities and Finance Committee Chairperson Luce, we have one item.
We have one item. Bid award LHS Aquatics Center new parking lot. Dan?
Yep. So part of the approval with the village in the approval for the additional parking at LHS, we bid out the earthwork and the paving associated with that project. There's still landscaping and landscaping and the fence, fencing to bid out an award. But in terms of the other two trades, the earthwork and the exterior paving, we're done and received. For the earthwork, we received two bids. Burger and DK Contractors, the apparent little bidder is DK Contractors for a bid of $187,985. And then for the paving, we received four bids. The apparent little bidder was All-Star Asphalt, bid $129,800. However, we have service concerns with All-Star based on our prior and current experience with that contractor and we are not recommending to go with them. We don't believe they're responsible. And so really the next, what we believe is the lowest responsible responsive bidder is Abbey Paving for $130,965. So it's a difference of about a little over $1,000 in there that we would recommend for approval. For that, both bids came in relative to what we were expecting in terms of the estimate. The earthwork was estimated at $215,000 and so the bid amount would be $187. And the paving was estimated at 109 and this came in at would be about 130. So one was up, one was down. So we're right on with track with what we're expecting in terms of the bids. And so I think the idea is we're looking to go for approval at the October 8th meeting.
Special meeting.
Have a special meeting to approve that. And that's perfectly within our timetable for schedule-wise to be able to get it done.
Any questions?
No. Dan, can you just comment on the vendor you're not recommending, the prior experience?
Sure.
Do you want to?
I'll let Mark speak to some of that.
They worked for us in a project a few years ago at Libertyville High School. And we had to spend extra time making sure that the work was done properly, especially in a floodplain. So our consultants, we had extra fees along with that. And presently, they were awarded low bid for the front entrance concrete replacement project here at Vernon Hills. And we are unhappy with the quality of the work and the responsiveness of the contractor to remedy this situation.
Are either of the bids that you'll be recommending vendors that are currently working on the pool project?
Abbey is the current paver. They haven't paved a whole lot yet, but they've been awarded the bid for the other paving. DK Contractors, Burger is the current contractor on award for the current earthwork that's been awarded. So DK Contractors is not the current provider.
Okay, any other questions?
No. Anything for other?
Okay, so no, oh, Jim, you want to make a few comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments so that people don't look at that and think we didn't do anything in our committee meeting this month. We actually did quite a bit. In addition to the couple dozen personnel items and 10 or so educational tour requests that were reviewed that were part of the consent agenda, we also are doing something somewhat unique. And I thank all the people for the patience in that meeting. And that is, we're going back and we're reviewing policies that, we're starting with policies that have significant responsibility for the board, something we have to take action on a regular basis, that type of thing. But nevertheless, we're going through a methodical review just so that we have a, you know, fresh set of eyes on our policies, on all board policies. To our knowledge, we don't know of any other district that's taking this initiative to do that. So I think it's valuable and I, you know, appreciate the folks that attend that meeting, going through those. We reviewed three at this last meeting and we'll have an ongoing list. And I also thank Bryant for going through the effort of pulling those out and calling those out so that we can review those on a regular basis. So that's it.
Okay, question?
Yeah.
Just again, I think we briefly talked about performance evaluations for our leadership. Just briefly, we talked about that at the last meeting. Any further follow-up on that at this point?
We're rolling that out soon. So, yeah.
Well, again, specifically our CEO, we're going to roll that out. Okay. Because again, I thought we were under the impression we had something and we just needed to fill it out. That was at least what was presented to me. And
Right.
Not presented to me, but when we talked, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought we had a process in place. We may have not done it timely, but I thought we had a process in place and I just.
Yeah, no, we will, we'll get that done.
Yeah, we do that. It'll all be coming out.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, CEDO?
Yeah, we had our quarterly governing board meeting on August 29th. And at that meeting, it was a budget meeting. So we took a while to get a forum, had to make some phone calls. People were a little worried about that. But eventually, we did have enough governing board members attend. The budget was approved. Fiscal year 19 was similar to the one I presented in June. It was about a million dollars more. Sorry, I gotta put my glasses on. So unanimously approved, yes, $65,986,100. And with a fund balance of $16 million. So it was up a million dollars from June because of its expected increased enrollment. Then secondly, I think we've mentioned this before, but just to keep a reminder that there will be changes on the way that IDEA funding is handled in the next year or two, in the next couple of budget cycles. And so I know Dan will keep us apprised of how that works. Instead of going through CEDO, it's going to come directly to the district and then have to go back to CEDO, right?
Yeah. So the way IDEA, which is a federal grant, and the main way that the federal government helps offset the cost of special needs education, is the money has historically gone to the cooperative. They keep a portion and then they will send us the remaining portion. Basically, the federal government has said you can't do that anymore. And so that will no longer happen. All of the money will come to us as districts and then we will have to write it. So it'll affect a number of things, including even the Articles of Agreement with CEDO. So there's going to be significant changes to some of those procedures, hopefully very small changes to the language in the articles. But that's going to be a feat certainly for CEDO in the next, this year. So that will be significant. But in terms, it's not really, what will change on our end is more revenue, but also more expenditure, because we're going to get more of that money rather than only getting what CEDO didn't keep. So there's going to be a number of things involved with that.
Watch for that. And then just lastly, just the tuition for our district for CEDO for the actual, for 2018, we had 37 students on average daily enrollment, $1,156,215. They're expecting that next year, that number of students will go up one and expecting about a million, too, will be our tuition is the, so there. That's my report.
Okay, great. Thank you for your continued efforts there. Okay, no IASP. So if I could ask for a motion to convene an executive session, tonight's topic, collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C2.
Someone?
There's seconds?
Second.
Roll call please.
Passo?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Munster?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Baxton?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. And again, we have no plans for any further action after the executive session tonight. So.